Welcome, everyone, to Monday, July 20, 2015's council meeting. We'll call it to order, and if you have a cellphone, please turn it off. And we'll start with a moment of silence, please. Thank you, the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Sandy.
Councilmember Barnes.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Crowe.
Here.
French.
Here.
Decker.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
And Mayor Domingo.
Here, thank you. Presentations this evening will start with the Mayor's Youth Coalition Substance Abuse Prevention Grant. Excuse me.
Just give council comments.
Did I skip something?
You did.
Yes.
Oh, I tried. Okay. Sorry, are there any comments from the council? Yes, Cheryl.
I just have one. We need to discuss some of the streets that are going to be done next year soon, because I'm getting an awful lot of complaints about Fitch Street. It's been put off now for about five years. We're getting to the point where it's down to nothing but gravel and spots. I think it's important that we start looking at those earlier this year than we have. I know that Erie Street took the majority of the money this year, but I really think there's some in town that are really getting bad. And as I said, Fitch Street is definitely one of them.
Yeah.
Yes, Sandy.
Thank you. Just wanted to announce that the Build Albion Fellows are starting their eighth week of their summer work at Albion College and in the community. They have come together in the last month and are organizing, along with the Rec Department, a basketball tournament. So if you're interested in participating, it's for children ages, well, three to seventeen. So there's a kid-friendly skills sort of camp going on at the same time as competitions, three different age groups. So if you want information, you can go to the Rec Department. They have flyers. You'll also see flyers spread out throughout the local businesses in town, and there's some contact information there. You could also contact me, and I can put you in touch with some folks, the Fellows, who are organizing the tournament. So that will be August 8th and 9th at Holland Park.
Okay. Colin.
I just wanted to let the council know that after about three years of very long litigation, the Court of Appeals just ruled in our favor on the drug forfeiture case, where we, among other things, have forfeited about thirteen thousand dollars in cash from an individual who was found to be in violation of the Controlled Substance Act and made a little new law in the process, so a victory in our favor.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lynn.
Just like to mention, I discussed this with our city manager and with Chief Kip about Holland Park. Holland Park is going to be beautiful pretty soon. It's already beginning to look better. But our boys, and these are teenagers, these are not little children, who are playing the basketball, are throwing their trash on the grounds, their Gatorade bottles and their water bottles. I stopped down last week, the group was playing, and I talked to them about that, and I asked them to please, we have trash receptacles there. Please pick up after yourself, put your stuff in the trash receptacle. Do not throw it on the ground. Trying to make a beautiful park here. And so I talked to Chief Kip and to Mrs. Mitchell. And we have kind of decided, and I guess maybe this is something that I would like to have put on the agenda for our next discussion, that if they're going to do that, then maybe we need to lock it up for a couple of weeks and not have use of it until they learn to pick up and put up their stuff. And some of them admitted that there were some that had been throwing it on the ground. So I said, would you please, before you leave here today, even if it's not yours, just pick it up, put it in the trash receptacle. They did not do that. So I'm thinking that if they're not going to do that, then maybe they should not have use and see how it feels not to have use of something they really, really would like to have. We want that park there for the children to have fun in, to play ball in, to play on the pieces that we're placing there, but we also want them to be responsible young men and women, and pick up and clean up behind themselves. Because we don't have enough people working in Parks Department to always get out there every day and clean up. And I am constantly out there with people, that I'm showing them the park, because we're still getting donations, we're getting the park completely finished. And in order to do that, no one wants to be seeing piles of trash everywhere. So I'm going to say to the young people, clean up after yourself if you want to continue to have the privilege of going there and playing ball when you want to.
Sounds good. Are there any further questions from council? Seeing none, we'll move on to our presentation. Mayor's Youth Coalition Substance Abuse Prevention Grant. Names and your positions, please.
My name is Darius McCormick, and I'm the City Clerk.
My name is Akaya Ridley, and I'm the Mayor.
My name is Lorenz Hill, and I'm the First Preaching.
Okay, so today, we came to tell you about a grant that we received for one thousand four hundred dollars from the Youth Advisory Committee. And when we received the grant, there were a few things that
Thank you.
needed to be accomplished with that money before September 30, 2015.
And prioring the Mayor's Youth Leadership Council to positively affect our community.
And we are going to have some police officers, and we have a few that we need to, we still have to talk about it some more, but we have a few that said they will be willing to talk to our sixth through eighth graders about substance abuse at the community school. And also, we are planning to have a school dance for sixth through eighth graders. It is, the name of it is going to be A Wildcat September Under the Stars. And it is going to be September 18th, which is the day before the festival, like the parade part. And it's from 8:00 to 10:30 at the Albion Community Schools Gym. And a DJ, there will be a DJ that's going to be provided by Genesis Terrell, and his, it's someone that works with him, but it's not him. But we don't know who it is for sure yet. And there will be appropriate music, and we will go over the list before that day so we can make sure. Because we know that some parents might not, they might be worried about the music that will be played. And Michelle Mueller is donating, like, cardstock paper for us to make the invitations and decorations. And we are going to pass out, we are going to gather at a meeting and make the invitations, and then hand a few to each teacher, and they can pass them out. So it'd save us trouble and money for stamps and stuff.
The luncheon is for more discussion. We don't have a location, but who will we be having and who will be invited?
We mentioned having a booth at the Festival of Forks that will collect expired medicine, and we didn't really discuss more about it.
It was just mentioned. And also, we talked about having a float for the parade, which the idea, like, the theme will be based off of the dance from the previous night. So we were thinking about having a truck pull the wagon. We were going to ask the Mayor.
Surprise! I'll just let you take the truck.
And we were going to get contact world corrugated, did I say that right? And get some cardboard so we can, like, make a 3D star or something, and paint it and put our names on it, like the name of the Mayor's Youth Leadership. And Superintendent Harper is going to provide the storage space and workspace for us to build it at. And we, our next meeting is on hold for a few weeks. So we will be back to the August council meeting with Amy Deshaun, and also Mr. Bond will be here as well for any further questions. And that is all we have for you today.
Thank you all very much.
That's true. Yeah, thank you.
Congratulations.
Any questions?
I'm sure some of the council would love to be chaperoned at your dance.
Oh, thanks.
Thank you very much. If there's no questions, job well done. Thank you. Next presentation is Cornerstone Update, narrate with Glenn Lindsey.
Good evening, councilmembers, Mayor.
Good evening.
I am Glenn Lindsey. I'm with Cornerstone Inspection Services. Cornerstone is the company that the city contracts with to provide all of the building, electrical, plumbing, and mechanical inspections for the city. Every municipality is required to enforce the state building code, along with the trade codes, mechanical, plumbing, electrical. So the city has to enforce those. And by contracting out to Cornerstone, it actually saves the city thousands and thousands of dollars in wage and benefit packages, vehicle expenses, office supplies, even continuing education. We pay for all of that ourselves. There's absolutely no cost for the city to use our services for those. There is a small charge to the city when we get involved in doing property maintenance inspections or ordinance violation enforcement. But even that's given it a reduced cost to the municipal government since it's directly built to the city. We issue all of the permits, we receive the applications, we issue the permits. We handle all of the administrative part of that. We have a full administrative staff that works for us. We're open five days a week, from eight in the morning till four at night. I, myself, am in the office every morning from 8:30 till 10:00. If there's any, anytime your residents have questions, code issues, they can call me pretty much every day of the week, or if any of the council members have, need to talk to me about code-related issues. I did supply John with some fee comparisons. I don't know if that was forwarded to you, but I ran some numbers on our fees compared to other agencies out there that do the same thing that we do. And what I did is I took the, the city of Battle Creek, they are with a program called AMSA. It's Area Metropolitan Services. They also do the city of Springfield and some other different townships and municipalities. Their minimum permit fee is a hundred dollars. So if you were going to replace a water heater or a furnace, or even do a roof, it's automatic minimum a hundred dollars. There's another company out of Athens, that's where we're located, Athens. There's another company in Athens also that the city previously contracted with. Their minimum permit fee is eighty-three dollars. And the state of Michigan, which is also an option for the municipalities, if they don't have their own in-house inspectors or contract out, they can always use the state of Michigan. Their minimum permit fee is a hundred and fifty dollars. And then Cornerstone's minimum fee is sixty-nine dollars. So we're anywhere from fifteen to fifty percent lower than the competitors that we have in the area. And I like to think that we provide an outstanding customer service. Nobody likes to have to get permits. Nobody likes to be told that, you know, something may not meet code. But I believe that there's a way to work with people and to communicate with people, that you can give them the bad news or let them know that something doesn't meet code in a compassionate way, and then offer to help them and work with them to try to come to some kind of resolution. I don't rule with an iron fist. I don't, you know, go out there and say, well, you're going to do it this way because I say you're going to do it. I don't have that kind of attitude. I actually was a contractor and a builder for many, many years before I became an inspector. So I've been on the other side. I know what it's like to deal with somebody that, you know, just has a lot of power and they let it go to their head. So John asked me to come and speak to you and just kind of explain to you what we do. And then I'm open to answer any questions that you may have. I did bring some applications from those other municipalities that I spoke of to reinforce the minimum permit fees. If anybody wants to take a look at those, I'd be happy to show you those. And then I can also speak in more detail. If somebody wants some time, I could meet with you to discuss in more detail how permits are priced and how those are enforced. I'd be happy to do that if anybody has the desire to get more information about that. At this time, I'd be open to any questions if anybody has anything for me.
So I, one of the, I had a resident, I guess it was either earlier this year or last year, they were having a structure built in their backyard. And I think what was communicated to me was that, I guess there was a, your firm, I guess cited a particular source for, either for a fee or for something outside of code. And they were asking, well, you know, can you show us where that is? And I think they were saying that that wasn't provided. So I was wondering if, when you, you know, if there is a problem, do you, how do you communicate that to residents? Do you say, okay, this is the issue? Or do you say, okay, it's violating this section and it's available here? How does that work?
If we cite a code section, we have to put a code section number or provide them with a code section number. And that way, they can go right to the code and look it up and read it for themselves.
And where is that available?
Those codes, John Tracy has a copy of the codes in his office. We also have a copy at our office, and I'm more than willing to fax or email that to somebody to back up a code section that is violated. And if somebody has an issue, if they want to just contact me, I can talk it, you know, through with them and let them know what it is that's in violation and why it's in violation. And even, I can't really help them fix it, but I can give them suggestions on how it could be remedied.
Okay.
As long as it's brought to my attention. A lot of times, what happens is they will, they'll go to the council members, but they don't come to us. They fear, and I wish they didn't, but they fear going to the building authority because they're afraid of repercussions. But that's not the attitude that we have. We're there to help. We have the same end goal in mind for the people is to get their project done and have it safe for the community, safe for them. So I have no problem if they want to contact me and say, I've got this issue and I need some help.
Oh, and Cheryl, are those codes available online or is it, like, only in?
They are not available online. They're limited availability online. You can do a Google search and find sections of the code, but you cannot find the code in its entirety. The state doesn't publish them online because they want people to buy them, rather than just go online and print them off and look at them.
Makes sense.
Thank you.
And they're very expensive. There's a number of books. The code changes every three years. So there are constant changes, and the books are very expensive. We keep a full library of the books. I think John has almost a full library, if not the complete library. The city should have them on hand. So there's no problem with access to those codes if somebody needs that.
You just have to do it the old-school way.
I'm sorry?
You just have to do it the old-school way.
Yes.
Any further questions for John?
The contract's not in the packet today. It's my understanding that the contract was last signed December of '09. And contracts typically don't go further than five years. So if it is your direction, then we can bring that back for renewal.
Please do. I need to make a motion for that, or just?
It's for a review, so. Pardon?
What were you saying?
I'm sure it's for a review. So we would have to review it. If it's over five thousand, it's got to come to us anyway.
Anyway. Right.
So we have to review it.
Right.
And make sure if we're going to go out for bid or if we're just going to continue with the contract.
Right.
It's not, per se, on the agenda?
Right. Well, that's why I was wondering if we could have to amend the agenda to put it on the agenda so we can...
That's probably what I would recommend.
Okay. We just put it at future agenda items. It'll come to the next meeting.
That's what I would do.
Let's do it that way. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time, sir.
Citizens' comments, persons addressing the City Council shall limit their comments to agenda items only and to no more than five minutes, and proper decorum is required. Are there any comments on the agenda this evening?
I'm assuming I would wait until the speaker's name.
Correct. Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar. The approval of regular session minutes from July 6, 2015.
So moved?
Support.
Moved and supported. Were there any questions? Seeing none, boys vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. It passes. Items for individual discussion. Request for approval of the second reading, ordinance 2015-03, and ordinance to amend sections 18-301 and 30-436.
So moved?
Support.
Moved and supported. Cheryl, you want to?
Sure. Mayor and council, this is the second reading of this proposed ordinance amendment relative to the requirements, as we discussed with Councilmember Barnes, if you recall, to have the vertical and horizontal support boards on fences to face inwards towards the individual property owner, and also allowing for those property owners with adjacent properties to decide amongst themselves which way the boards would face.
Are there any questions on which way the boards have to face?
Inward.
If not, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Barnes.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Crowe, yes. French.
Yes.
Decker.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Domingo.
Yes, thank you. B, request approval of the second reading ordinance of 2015-04, and ordinance to be updated to the nondiscrimination ordinance.
So moved?
Support.
Moved and supported. Do you want to update this? Cheryl, please.
Mayor and council, this is the second reading of this proposed ordinance amendment for the nondiscrimination ordinance. And it adds sections relative to, inserting language relative to nondiscrimination, relative to height, weight, marital status, physical or mental disability, family status, sexual orientation or gender identity. And this applies specifically to employment, housing, public accommodations, and public services. It also eliminates the section previously in regards to the Human Relations Committee. And all complaints will be filed with the city manager in consultation with the city attorney.
Questions? If not, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Decker.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Mayor Domingo.
Yes, thank you. C, request approval of the second reading ordinance of 2015-05, and ordinance to amend municipal civilian infraction ordinance by amending section 1-26G3.
So moved?
Support.
Moved and supported. Cheryl?
Mayor and council, this is related to the prior ordinance, and this allows for the civil infraction fines, with the first fine being two hundred and fifty dollars for the first offense, four hundred dollars for the second offense, and five hundred dollars for the third and subsequent offenses.
Questions? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Crowe.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Decker.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Mayor Domingo.
Yes, thank you. Request approval of Blue Cross renewal rate and change of renewal date to October.
So what's this about?
So moved?
Support.
Moved and supported. Cheryl?
Mayor and council, first I want to note that Mr. Tim Q, our agent, is here in case you want an intelligent response to any of your questions relative to health insurance. As I understand it, okay, we're up for a renewal. And with the Affordable Care Act, because we have over fifty employees, we are required to go into the small group plan for under one hundred.
Right.
With that, there is the potential savings of substantial savings, over twenty percent. However, the established deductibles would be twenty-seven hundred for a single and fifty-four hundred for a family, which is considerably more than what our employees are experiencing now. Also, the employer, the city's contribution, would be limited for the health savings account to seven hundred dollars, whereas presently, two thousand for the individual and four thousand for the family. So that would be a significant impact on our employees. The other option under the Affordable Care Act would be that it allows us to keep our existing plan for one year. So our renewal period is January 1. And so we could keep our existing plan for one year. That would also result in some savings, three point eight percent. And the third option, C, this one is the same as the prior one. So we would experience a reduction based on the Affordable Care Act, how it's configured now. However, if we change our renewal period to October, so October to October of next year, there are additional savings of six point six nine percent. So the recommendation to you is that we go with option C, which is changing our renewal date to the October 1. And in doing that, we have to confirm with Blue Cross, those are our intentions by July 24th. So that's why it's before you today. And if you had any specific questions, I would strongly recommend that you ask Mr. Tim Q.
My only question would be is if we change it to October, are they going to be better at getting us what the future rates are going to be?
Yeah.
We've always seemed to have that problem.
Yeah.
They're always getting to us too late by the time we do our budget.
Mike Tim Q, 1207 Woodlong Boulevard. That will probably not change. Blue Cross is anywhere from ninety to one hundred and twenty days getting renewal rates out. So it will be ahead, but you will be on an October date. So for budgeting purposes, for the new year, you will have rates ahead of time. But you will have old rates for October, November, and December, and new rates coming around the next October is when your renewal will change. The one advantage, city manager did an excellent job summarizing this. Again, the option of doing nothing. You will see a small decrease in the rates from three to four percent January 1st. What's triggering, let me back up. What's triggering this is the Affordable Care Act. The definition of a, size of a group is changing January 1. Currently, small groups are defined as one to fifty lives. Effective January 1, it's one to one hundred lives is a small group. So the city would be then thrown into the small group rating category and have to follow the small group rules, which are different than the large group rules presently. It has been confirmed, Blue Cross, with the Michigan Insurance Department, that the city can move up the renewal date to October 1st. Which would mean you do not have to go into the small group market until one year after your renewal in 2016. So it'll essentially allow you to keep your exact same plan as you have now from October of '15 to October of '16, and then one more year, from October of '16 to October of '17, without making any, required to make any changes as of right now. Those are the rules.
Yes, Cheryl.
One of my concerns, of course, is the fact that, number one, after the election, there may be a lot of changes made. And number two, the entire Affordable Care Act does not go into effect until January of 2017. What will that do to that? I mean, are we going to have to, from October until January that year, are we going to have to have one plan and then make all kinds of changes as of 2017?
Not as of now. The change you would make would be for one year. Okay. Now, again.
I know.
You're correct. It could change. One of the things that they have been going after is to change the definition of the groups back to fifty lives and leave all of those groups from fifty to one hundred, just as they are now. That's what's going on. So going again, back to the option, you can stay as you are with the January renewal and receive a three to four percent decrease. But January of '17, you will be required, as of now, to go into the small group market, the small group menu of plans, and abide by those rules in the and abide by those rules in the small, small group area. This change will allow essentially an extra nine months, nine to 10 months under the current program.
Right, so option C basically delays the inevitable until October of 17.
Correct.
Okay.
Although it might not be inevitable.
Well, right, assuming current, right.
Right.
And also, also with it, I don't know if you put that in your summary, Blue Cross is capping next year's increase.
Yeah, 9.9.
At 9.9. Excellent. Now, they did that this year for some groups that were transitioning.
Yeah.
And as you can see, cities is going to go down 3% to 4%, so it's not to say that you won't go down, but you won't go up any higher than 9.9. They're putting that in right now.
And that may be actually protect us because when we're doing the budgeting process, we just add that 9.95 in.
Yeah.
So that we're protected.
Correct.
Yeah, we're sheltering that.
Yeah, but again, that would only be for October, November, and December of 2017.
Right, right, but that's.
Budget wise, yeah. Okay.
So is your recommendation that after 17, we go to the higher group? We get people back into our circle to go to the 100 number?
Yeah.
That we used to do?
Or legislation changes it back down to 50 lives. That would be ideal.
So right now?
Leave things as they are.
So right now, for the next year and a half or two years, we're going to have to play this and stay with this coverage as we have, as it's written now?
Correct. Yeah, you will not be allowed to make a carrier change either, is an example. Next year, if you said, ah, we're going to leave Blue Cross and we're going to go to another company, you're going to go to the other company in the small group market. You will lose your one-year grandfathering status.
Right, right.
So.
Oh, yeah, we're definitely tied.
Right.
Our hands are definitely tied.
I would agree, the best alternative at this point is to do the renewal date change. Previously, for years and years, the renewal date, if you recall, those have been on, was in May and Mike Herman and I, we changed that for, we wanted it for budgeting purposes mostly, but it kind of sets it back a little bit, but there's a good reason. You get a little bigger discount in the rates and you'll maintain the group status for a little bit longer.
Are there any questions for Mike?
No, I was just going to say, so in my motion that I made, I will recommend that we take option C so we can amend.
Yeah, change to October.
To change to October as presented.
Option C or option three?
Option C.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
There are no more further questions. We'll have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember French?
Yes.
Decker?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Mayor Domingo?
Yes, thank you. E, discuss slash request approval of park reservation policy and fees. That should be a roll call vote on E and a roll call vote on F when we get to them because they have to do with money. They just, they were not printed in there, so if we go for the approval, it'll be a roll call vote, so.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Questions? You want to touch on that, Cheryl, if you would, please?
Yes, mayor and council, as we were reviewing some of our policies, especially in regards to the rental of our parks and facilities, one thing that was noted was that they hadn't been reviewed really in its entirety for about five years. So looking at the fees, that they're quite affordable and we wanted to maintain that, but we at least want to cover our costs, so we're looking at a rate that at least covers the cost of one worker being there for an hour. So our recommendation is that for the, most of the parks, and there's a listing provided in your packet, that the increases are $15, so that would be $55 for residents and $85 for non-residents. We also included in the rental rate package, if you want to call it, the ball fields for the daytime and the night, that they have lights at night, and also their increase for weddings is going from $90 for residents and $140 for non-residents to $125 for residents and $150 for non-residents. And that's primarily because with weddings, there's typically a lot more decorations and preparation and cleanup afterwards, so that's a slightly higher rate. So those are our recommendations to you.
Questions? See none?
Oh, sorry, Cheryl.
Go ahead, Andy.
Sorry, so, I mean, I'm thinking about the basketball tournament on August 8th and 9th. Do these rate changes go effective immediately or are they starting at the new year or how is, how is that?
They're going to affect immediately.
Immediately, thank you, thank you.
What about any reservations that have been made in advance?
Those would not be affected.
Okay.
From this point forward.
We'll leave it at that. Okay. No further questions. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Decker?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Mayor Domingo?
Yes, thank you. Discuss and request the approval of recreational van deposit and guidelines.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Cheryl?
Yes, we have the three vans in a small truck, but usually people want to rent our recreation vans for various activities because there isn't a public transportation system in town and to make that, we want to make that available to our residents, but also what we were encountering were that not everyone brings back the vehicles in the condition that we would hope they would. So to encourage them to do that, one of the main things we're doing is instituting a $25 deposit, refundable deposit, so if they don't put the gas back in or if it needs to be cleaned up, we have to pay staff to do that, that we are at least covering our costs. We're more specific in terms of the details, including the, I think it was, it wasn't, the other one had the indemnity, but actually tracking, so there's a checklist, similar to if you rent a vehicle, you know, how you both go through and make sure everything, the condition of the vehicle before you leave and then the condition of the vehicle you return. So we have a checklist associated with that that we want our residents to be using when they're renting the vehicle.
Yes, Cole on?
I have to apologize to Cheryl because I didn't get to ask her this ahead of the meeting, so I don't mean to spring this on you, but I'm just curious and this is just the attorney in me, how are we working the insurance?
I checked, I did check with MML and they're familiar with us doing that and they're essentially fine as long as they're a licensed driver. We don't even need that they, as a driver, have insurance themselves. They'll automatically fall under our insurance.
So, well, I guess my question then is, so if they rent our vehicle and get into a car accident, it's our insurance that ends up getting paid?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Do, it says here that the drivers must possess a valid Michigan chauffeur's license. Do, who checks that?
We do. They're required to provide a copy of their driver's license, their driver's record from the Secretariat of State and verification that they do have the CDL license.
And then do we keep that on?
On file.
On file?
Yes.
Okay. So, for instance, I could not walk in and say, I want to rent a city van and get it.
No.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure, thank you.
That helps a lot.
I have a question on the refundable aspect of it. Where in tear wise, would there be any way that we could have a portion that wasn't refundable?
I'm always open to not refunding, but.
No, I'm just thinking where in tear over use over a period of time.
Yeah, we, we don't, there's no fee structure in here. What do they give them for free?
I mean, there is a thing about, you have the 25 and there's like a per gallon or per mile.
Right. It's quite affordable. Primarily, most of the organizations that want to utilize the vehicles are non-profit or even are, mostly they're sports related, so if a football team or a basketball team used to go to Kalamazoo, this is, we're trying to make it as a partnership, so we're not trying to make a profit on it, but we are trying to at least cover our costs and with gas rates, probably in a year, we may need to look at if our rates are really covering our costs, but for now, at least have the deposit in place and spelling out more specifically what our expectations are in these agreements.
Oh, yeah, we're charging 56 cents a mile.
Upon the return of the deposit, is that the same day they take the van?
No, that's when they return the vehicle and we have inspected it. So if they returned it after hours or in the weekend, we might not get to look at it until that Monday.
Okay. As long as we understand, they're not going to pull back, you know? Any further questions? If not, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Barnes?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Decker?
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo?
Yes, thank you. G, discussion of the sidewalk scheduled for repair.
Yeah.
Cheryl?
What's on the list?
But we just wanted to provide you with an overview of the sidewalks that are scheduled for the repairs for this 2015 season and they are identified by those that were required to have some work done because of water sewer department, then those that we had complaints as well as other contractual relations and the food hub was added because there are some, there is some work associated with that project that will require some side work attention that we have as the city agreement partnership to assist them with for that project and then everything else if funds are available and all of this is contingent on the funding being available.
And this was all color coded that we don't have?
I think it was emailed out to you with the actual colors.
It's listed one in order.
Sorry, what?
There's, it's been listed.
Oh, yeah, I noticed that it didn't print out well, so the color version was emailed to you, but I can print it out in the office if you still need it.
No, it's fine. I'm just going to comment that Linden Avenue's been on an extras list now for a number of years and never seems to rise to the top. So.
And I guess, I guess just in keeping with, you know, some concerns I've raised, particularly in the budget session, but I think we also need to prioritize some areas that don't have sidewalks at all, so I think.
Oh, so to install new?
How?
So to install new?
In some places, I think it's one of the, you know, because I've expressed, you know, other concerns, but I think that that's something that I would like to see because like, as I mentioned earlier about, if you, I think it's CAS, you know, if you, well, a number of years ago, there were younger students, college students who would get fines for, you know, blocking traffic because there was no, or they would, I guess, were they, they were, they were not walking on sidewalks, but in some places, there weren't sidewalks to walk on in the first place, so I think that's one of the things that I think we need to look at is maybe some key areas that don't have sidewalks. And that, and like, for example, I think CAS would be a good example because that's a corridor right there.
Neither on CAS or there are no sidewalks?
Just on the, just before you get to the, on the south side, just before you get to.
Yeah, but they have sidewalks on the north side, so that's.
Right.
No offense, but that's ridiculous. I mean, sidewalks on both sides, I can understand if there are houses there, but.
Yeah, if there are no houses there.
So are these the only ones that's going to be done this year?
That's the plan unless you give us some other locations and it's your priority.
When do they start next year's plan?
Next year. Next year.
And to that, and to that point, we do recognize that we do need to be doing some new sidewalk construction as well and we started the process when the Michigan Works students were here to actually start surveying those sidewalks to get an idea of where they are needed and one of the priorities for next year is to actually identify at least a couple areas where we can, we need to install new sidewalks. It takes considerably more funding to do that, which impacts our ability to do the repairs, but we do understand, we do need to be addressing that issue.
Well, I think probably what we need to do is discuss this at the retreat.
Mm-hmm.
Get a good start on, a good handle on that, along with what streets.
Yeah.
Might possibly come up for repair.
Didn't we do that like three or four years ago?
Yeah.
We used to do that.
Correct.
It's time we do it again.
Yeah.
Because, you know, one of the things that I discussed earlier is I hate to put streets in one and sidewalk in the same. I kind of like to keep them so that we're working at opposite ends of towns and everybody's getting a little piece of something as it is to try to do that. And if you look on the back page, you wonder what the curb and gutter is, that is for probably handicap ramps.
Yep.
Off the shoulders.
Yep.
Yes, Cheryl?
I wanted to, I, I know that Linden Street is a problem, okay? But what I needed clarification on, and I don't know who can do it, but a lot of the problems on some of these streets where we have many older, older trees, are trees, let's face it. So can someone clarify for me again how we decide what we're going to do with the sidewalks where there is a tree that is interfering with putting the sidewalk straight through? We don't cut the tree down, but I know on Linden in a couple spots, the trees are bringing up the sidewalks and so.
Ninety percent of the problem.
Yeah, yeah, and so, so I guess at this point in time, can someone explain to me what we do with those because it seems like, I hate to, you know, I hate to throw away the money.
I know what they used to do.
They used to go around the tree.
When they could.
Right.
They couldn't, they took the roots from the tree, hopefully, most of the time it didn't, because of the trees being so big and old.
Yeah, yeah.
It didn't hurt them, but they only cleared them out of that area. Now, what they're going to do on Linden is beyond me because.
That's really a problem.
That's going to be one of those, if you go around them, you're going to be up on their front porches.
Exactly.
No, I know.
I mean, there just isn't a lot of room, so I hope they use their, you know, noggin's a little bit when they're going down and it looks to me like, you know, it's going to be a pretty good run, you know, of where they're going to do it and like I said, if it's one of those that if we have to go in.
Yeah, Linden is the exception, is a difficult case because.
It is.
With the mill race right next door and the road having to be a certain width, there really is no, there's no room unless you make a one-foot wide sidewalk. So, yeah. And maybe what we do is we talk to each individual resident and say, this is what we want to do. Is it okay if we come into your front yard so you can preserve this tree? Because they may say, you know, take the tree down. I mean, they may, they may. I doubt it, but they may. But again, if we involve the residents in those decisions, then I think then we don't run into the problems of getting people complaining and so.
That's, yeah, and, and I think we have, I mean, I hate to say this, but I think we have avoided Linden for that very reason.
Right, I understand that.
Because it is such a mess with those big trees.
Right.
Well, you got, you know, you got the mill race, you got the street that's in terrible condition.
Right.
You've got the rails and everything else down to there. We've looked into a total reconstruction and unfortunately, you're not going to gain anything because there's no place to move.
There's no place to go.
You can't make it wider, you can't, you can't do anything, you're just stuck with what you got, so we have.
Unless you spend millions of dollars.
Top priority list. Yes, Reese?
I recognize that all of our precincts we represent, we carry priorities. And going through the list, I'm recognizing that in precinct one, First Street, Second Street, Third Street, Carson, Wild, East Broadway, west of Alvion and Hartwell are really not on, on the list and I'm wondering, when was the last time we made an evaluation of the streets that are on the list? When did we really go out and take a look at it?
I think we're talking about sidewalks.
These are sidewalks.
State of the mayor, in the past, we got together and our former city manager and our director of public service went out and prioritized the street, color coded reports, and they gave a recommendation to us, so I'm saying, when is the last time we did this?
That we done the assessment, you mean?
Right.
Not when we done sidewalk?
Right.
Okay.
It's my understanding that this list is based on staff actually going out and based on not only their own individual observations and their knowledge of upcoming projects or required projects, but also complaints that were received.
What year? I mean, have we got?
This year.
Okay, well, I would like to add First, Second, Third, Carson, Wild, East Broadway, west of Alvion and Hartwell because they're not here and the bus line comes right along housing complex and that's horrible, from Alvion all the way down to Mallory and Cooper. First Street, Second Street, Third, Carson, Wild, East Broadway, west of Alvion and Hartwell. Thank you.
Was that about streets or is it sidewalks?
Sidewalks.
Right. Okay. There's no more discussion on sidewalk because there's nothing, you know.
You know what?
Yes.
Those would be streets, I'm sorry. The roads.
Yeah.
Those are roads.
Yeah.
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 And we all know about those.
All right. This next one, on H, is a motion to reconsider the appointment to the Alvion Housing Commission. And then part two is the motion to rescind the apartment or the appointment to the Alvion Housing.
So moved.
I mean, go ahead.
I moved.
Yep.
That we reconsider appointment to the Alvion Housing.
What I need is, like, like I said, I, I was waiting for a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't hear it.
Right.
I second.
Okay. I need either Gullen or I need Cheryl, whichever one thinks they can get it straight.
Well, the, the.
Of what happened.
The, the simplest explanation, I, I think, is specifically as it relates to appointments to the Housing Commission, the Housing Commission seems to be the exception to the general rule that appointments are recommended by the mayor and approved by the council. The Housing Commission is the, apparently one exception to that rule in that it just requires appointment by mayor that we've designated by resolution to do those appointments. It doesn't require council approval. So, at the previous meeting, when the mayor made a recommendation and the council did not approve it, that was effectively invalid action by the council. So, we, we placed, in speaking with the city manager, we placed it back on the agenda just for purposes of clarity, so that that original action could be rescinded. And, and then, and I guess ultimately it's up to the mayor as to who he wants to fill that position.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we need a motion to reopen it and then, a, a motion to rescind it?
This was very helpful.
The first motion is to reconsider, so that basically brings your prior action back before you.
Right.
Then once it's back before you, then the recommended action is to rescind your previous action.
I do.
Which was not to confirm.
Yes, Cheryl?
I do wanna make a comment, though. This, I understand all this, and I'm not going to disagree with it, although I did, evidently, when we voted on it. But what I do wanna say is, it bothers me that there is something in this city that we have absolutely no knowledge. I think that there needs to be some kind of accountability. Those are our housing, our housing developments, that is something that the, the police patrol, it's something that we, that our citizens live in. And I really do think, whether it be that we have someone from the council that is ex officio on, that can be at the meetings, that can find out what's going on, I really think that's important. Because without that, the only thing that we, we just have, it's more, not, not, no con, no disrespect to you, Mayor, but it, we, it, there may never be a change, it may never change, things may never have new eyes looking at them. It just bothers me that something that is a very important part of our city is being left in, to a group that we have no input, no, we really don't even get reports on, in a gen, on a regular basis from the Housing Commission. If we wanna put that in place, or if we wanna put the, if we wanna put a, someone on there that doesn't have a voting right, that's fine. But, and I don't know if that's legal or not, Gullen, so that you're probably going to tell me. However, I just think that that's a very large part of our city, and I think our citizens deserve to have other ears listening to their complaints and, and the issues that come up in the Housing Commission. And I'm not, that's not a comment, I mean, it's not a comment on the, the quality of the Housing Commission, the board. People come and complain to us. And so consequently, if I have no, I can't help anybody if I have no authority at all, I don't even have any place to go right now. So my concern is that if there's nothing we can touch as far as the Housing Commission, that bothers me a lot.
Look, go ahead.
I was just gonna, to say, Councilwoman Kraus, that statutorily, the Housing Commission is a separate corporate body. So to a certain extent, they are independent, they are required by statute to report to us on an annual basis. And, and that, so that is something that they have no choice to do, whether or not, so that's something that needs to be done. You know, the, the issue as to having, having council members on the board, I, or the, I'm sorry, the commission, I know we've discussed that on previous occasions, and, and you're well aware of my opinion on it, HUD takes a different opinion on it, and they see it as a conflict, so, you know, that's, that's a decision that, that you as a council will have to make, but just wanted to be aware of that.
Okay. You're it?
So I, I agree with you, I think there's always, you know, value in having new eyes, and I think the big thing, since I've been on council, you know, even with the resolution to change the appointing power has always been to make sure that we have some accountability. I mean, there are some boards that we appoint that don't meet often at all. Others have monthly meetings, some have administrators, some, some don't. And so I think that really, there are specific, you know, there could be specific concerns raised, but I think at the, at the end of the day, whether it's the Housing Commission, whether it's EDC, whatever it is, I, I think it's important to have accountability. And so, what I, what I suggested, and I talked to the manager about this, is specifically on this particular board, I think we should have a, a joint meeting, because I think, you know, there've been concerns raised, but haven't been fully fleshed out. And so I think that would give us an opportunity to talk, you know, one-on-one with the board, with the commission and then council, so we can have questions answered without, you know, the intermediary, you know, shading of things. So, that, that's one thing, and I was gonna wait till future agenda items, but, you know, I think that would be beneficial to do, so we get a clear understanding of what the actual nature of the concerns are. And then, you know, based on, especially on the letter we received from our congressman, what has been done to address that. So I think that's something I would, I would suggest and, and support, so, thank you.
I guess what I would like to do is I'd like to get the clarification done for our records, our minutes. Let's put it back out, which I think has to be put back on by one of the opposing forces, am I correct? The motion?
Yeah.
And then we have to take care of the motion to rescind it. That clears our, our minutes.
Right.
And then, what we need, I think when we get down to future agenda items, I would highly recommend that you put that on, what you just said, because it really has no bearing on what we're taking care of in these two things here.
Right, right.
If that's okay.
So, since I opposed at the beginning, my motion addresses your concerns and needs?
I, I would say so.
Okay.
I would second it.
Okay.
Maurice seconds it, okay. Are we doing this just the first part? And the second part, or?
They'll be two separate motions.
They'll be two separate motions, okay.
Separate motions, okay.
First motion is made by.
Me.
French.
Okay. That's what I thought.
I guess, as, as a point of clarification, I, there, there's a rescission of the decision to not appoint, that's being rescinded, but second motion to rescind appointment to the Housing Commission, I don't believe anyone was appointed.
Correct.
No.
So I, I, maybe that second motion.
Actually, number two shouldn't be there.
Okay.
We should only be doing number one to rescind that, to make our minutes correct. Take and, take number two, if I can do so, take a motion to take number two off.
So moved.
Just a point or question here. So, I mean, what, actually, I mean, two, you're saying you're rescinding the vote?
Correct.
Yeah.
Right.
It was not to happen that.
Shouldn't have happened. Rescinding the vote, not rescinding.
So in that case, you probably should do two, right?
Yeah. Does that make sense? So we still have two motions on the floor, we're just, the second one is, is re-changing the word to motion to rescind the vote to the.
Correct.
To, for the appointment.
Rather than the appointment.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Cut this off.
So they're voting now on the motion to reconsider the appointment to the Alvion Housing Commission.
The motion to, yes, reconsider the appointment.
Right.
Because we had done that.
That's a roll call vote.
That's a roll call vote.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Decker?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes. Now, the motion to rescind the appointment.
Rescind the vote.
The vote.
The vote.
Was, that will be to rescind the vote that happened.
That's right.
Right.
So moved.
Support.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Kraus?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Decker?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Domingo.
Yes, our records are clear.
Phew.
Don't ever make that mistake. Uh, discussion of Mr. Bailing's summer water credit. Cheryl, I guess?
Okay, Mayor and council, if you recall, I think at the July 6th council meeting, Mr. Bailing appeared and he inquired as to his request to have the, the period of time in which he can receive the sewer credit on his water bill to be extended for a longer period of time. And you requested that I, that you be able to respond by August 1st. So what you have inside, in your packet is the response that I gave to Mr. Bailing in regards to that, is my understanding that in the past, the city managers or administrators did offer an opportunity on a case-by-case basis to individuals to receive exceptions. My personal philosophy is that it applies to everyone or no one. So you have the policy in front of you in which any individual and the president and the city can apply for the sewer credit for the lawn sprinkling program for the period of May 1 through August 31st. The form that's required to be completed is in your packet as well.
Okay. And what I'll do at this time, Mr. Bailing, if you'd like to come forward and make the statement or the comment that you were going to do.
Would you like? Jim Bailing, 12860 Maple Street. Can I assume everyone remembers the things I had to say prior, so I don't have to go over all of them?
Correct. Yes, you can make that assumption.
I guess my first suggestion, and this refers to the letter, that because something is losing money, to me, is not a legitimate reason for charging people for something they're not using. Quite honestly, I think your rates are pretty reasonable, from the little I know. If they need to be increased, I recommend you increase them to whatever they need to be, you know, to be reasonable for that department. And then along with that, not charge citizens for use of sewer that they don't use. It was suggested, I think by you, Mayor Domingo, and by the way, thank you for getting back to me promptly, that would I be happy with a month extension on either side? The answer is yes, that would serve my personal needs. But I agree with the city manager as well, I'm not asking for a favor, no more than I was when this happened a number of years ago. But yes, that is what would help in my case, since I don't have a swimming pool or any of those other things, it's simply using my in-ground watering system.
Okay. Are there any questions from the council? Sina? Okay, thank you. Request of approval of the city protocol policy. Jay?
So moved. Support.
Moved and supported. Do you wanna touch on that, Cheryl?
Yes, we have a new council member, and we also have been appointing new individuals to various boards and commissions, so I thought it was a great opportunity to talk about what is the appropriate protocol relative to giving directions to staff, how you communicate with staff, how do, do we all contribute to a positive and productive workplace environment? But this just basically outlines what the expectations are relative to council employees and the members of our boards and commissions.
Questions from council? Yes, Maurice?
Independence of boards and commissions. As a council person, we still have the right to go into an open meeting, an open meeting act, and attend that meeting.
Okay.
And if we have questions concerning any agenda, they're allowed to ask questions to that board.
Definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? Sina, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember French?
Yes.
Decker?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Mayor Domingo.
Yes, thank you. Report from the city manager.
Thank you. There's been a lot going on, as you may have heard, we had a new employee of the month, we're recognizing Patrick Miller from the wastewater treatment plant. He's been with us less than a year, but we're very excited about his enthusiasm and willing to cooperate, and he's really enthusiastic now being so, my applause to him and our appreciation. Probably the big project right now is the Erie Street reconstruction, it is underway. The water main has been fixed, so we started off with a little bit of wetness. They're looking at, let's see, approximately, as you already know, the 13,500 square feet of sidewalk and 120 linear feet of curb and gutter to be replaced throughout the city. Last week also, our vector truck, vector truck broke down, and it has been repaired, but one of the things we have to look at is, especially in regards to our larger equipment, how are we going to sustain and keep operational equipment on hand? Most of it is getting very old, and it's being, becoming very costly to make those repairs. We met with the USDA rural development last week in regards to how can we apply for grants and loans, very specifically relative to the replacement of our larger vehicles, particularly in the DPW area. So we're looking into that specifically right now. There is going to be an employee picnic on Wednesday, August 19th, from 11:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Victory Park. And I just wanted to get a sense from you if it would be okay to close City Hall for that hour and a half, so everyone could attend.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Yes, Sandy?
I, I would say, since everyone at this bench is officially an employee, I think we would approve that hour off to close City Hall, because we'll all want some lunch.
One of the questions that'll be asked is that with or without pay?
Oh. Do they get paid for lunch hours now?
Half hour.
Some do, some don't.
We can work out those details.
Yeah, I, I'd see, I, I'd see we keep the pay.
That makes a difference in attendance. If you're not gonna pay them, they ain't gonna.
I, it sits once a year.
Yeah.
What about the protocol policy?
So I'm hearing you saying you're okay with everyone getting paid, although they're, they'll have a longer lunch period on that day.
Yeah, right.
In City Hall, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Get paid for half an hour, take an hour and a half, that's okay.
Tommy, the finance director, um, he has shared with us that the temporary staff person, Connie, is working out exceptionally well. She's doing a great job, she's catching on, and she's also taking on some new assignments. We're very thrilled with that. The summer property tax bills went out. The payments are already coming in and we are still looking forward to the credit card payment capabilities being online soon.
Yeah, I've heard that before.
The residential cleanup, there's been a lot of questions about that. That's going to be Saturday, July 25th, so that's the Saturday. And it's from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at Ketchum Field and Harris Field. I'd asked for each of the, um, directors to give me a paragraph. And if you know anything about John Tracy, this is his version of a paragraph, it takes up the whole page. But anyway, he gave it.
Love you, John.
But, uh, you can see he's been working hard. Um, and these numbers, um, in terms of the number of code violations and inspections, that's from last month, so it's even higher, because there's been significantly increased in activity, um, already for this month. So I do want to thank him for all of his hard work. We are working on a rental registration ordinance, um, so that should be coming to you relatively soon, it seems like, if you're reading it. John wrote that one too, so it takes me a minute to get through it. And, what else did I want to mention? Our recreation department is doing a whole lot of great stuff. So, starting this Friday, um, for adults, there will be music in the park at Holland Park that will be from 6:00 to 9:30. There'll be music, there, people are encouraged to bring the chairs and dominoes or cars or just hang out and enjoy the beautiful day at the park. They also are starting, um, rec- recreation basics for young peoples. And those will be, um, Monday through Thursday, I believe, at, also at Holland Park. So you have a flyer in regards to that, it's for boys and girls. So we're encouraging everyone to come out. That's 9:00 to 12:00 for the seven to eleven-year-olds and from 1:00 to 4:00 in the afternoon for the twelve to fourteen-year-olds. And that's a twenty dollar fee. It's a seven-week program that begins on July 27th. And I don't know, I had it out today, there was a thank you letter from Albion College. Um, this one was specifically for Corn- Conus- Cornerstone inspections. And I just wanted to really draw your attention to that, because, um, there were a lot of last-minute changes and they did an exceptional job in trying to accommodate everything to make certain all these projects were done and able to go through. And if without their cooperation, some of them could not have happened. So I, I want to thank Lynn and Cornerstone for cooperating with that project. And I'm very thrilled to announce that the Albion-Marshall Connector is going to move from three days a week to five days a week. So it'll be available five days, uh, Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And there are also conversations, I don't think they've confirmed it yet, that they will be allowing for some internal, um, um, commutes, so people within Albion can move to other places within Albion. But that hasn't been finalized yet, but definitely the Monday through Friday, so that'll be a great asset for all of our residents. And I think they're also working with, um, seniors in Marshall to bring them over from the Thursday, um, movies at the Bone, so we'll be benefiting in other areas as well. So, and I did ask them if they could even stop at Maple Grove, since they're coming anyway to pick up our seniors and pick, so there's a lot of great things going on in regards to that. And the bike ride program is, um, going to get kicked off again, mostly in April, outside of August and September, so the next community ride will be August 1st. These are Saturdays, they'll be 9:00 a.m. and they start at City Hall, so you can get your bikes tuned up and be ready for those. And public safety is always looking for new initiatives, and one of them is this Nixle program, where, um, Chief Scott Kip is able to send out, um, announcements, announcements immediately, um, as incidents are occurring or get our residents updated, it's just a matter of signing up. And you can get the announcements either through email or Skype, not Skype, but, um, social media, so either Twitter or Facebook. And it's, it's really a great, um, tool to have. Um, there were some, um, counterfeit fifty-dollar bills circulating, so to be able to get that out specifically to the businesses, and he's able to, um, create groups, um, so he can have a business group or employee group, so that only a certain group can get certain, uh, messages if they're specific for them or can go to everyone. So I know with the sheriff, they send out the weather alerts. I do recommend that if you have it, go to your phone, don't have it go to your phone and your email on both phones, because you'll get four alerts, like I do, and that wasn't the best idea I ever had. But it is handy to get that information in a very timely fashion. And also, um, I'm sad to share with you that we had the passing of two former employees. One was the public safety, um, former public safety officer, Gary Morgan, and the other was a former city employee, as well as the spouse of a former city manager, Sandra K. Cole. So, um, both of those passings, and we give our, um, our sympathy and prayers to the families. And as you know, um, we want to thank Audrey DeGroot, the, um, student from Albion who took your group photo, there's a, a bad copy of it here, um, the handout I just gave you, but she also invited you this week, if you're interested, she can take individual portraits as well. And that concludes my report.
And you said John's was long?
Hey.
Yes, Sandy.
I just have a general question, I don't know who has the answer. Where does one go to get your fridge de-freoned, so we can dispose of it? Is there a place in Albion where you can go to get them to take the freon out?
Yeah. And an appliance?
Yeah, yeah, if old fridge is broken.
Next to Charlie's.
Oh, um, Albion Appliance.
Yeah.
Dusky.
She, she will do that.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Albion Appliance, next to Charlie's.
Because in order for them to take it, it has to.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I got one that's, that the motor's gone, but it hasn't lost its freon, so I just wanted to be able to drop it off, but not. Thank you.
Yep. M is motion to excuse everybody who's here. So we'll move on to citizens' comments, persons addressed in the city council, shall limit their comments.
You forgot about future agenda items.
Oh, okay.
Because we got some stuff we gotta talk about, right?
That's twice tonight.
I know, twice, man.
Thanks, Mike. Uh, yeah, future agenda items, like.
Just.
Cheryl wore me out.
Like I mentioned earlier, I think we should, um, just contact the commission and request a, a work session.
With the housing commission?
Mutually convenient time.
What?
The housing commission.
Yeah, oh, housing commission, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And the sidewalk request, I think that Maurice asked, what might save that is when we have something on the agenda that has to do with, uh, public services, the superintendent or the director should be here. We don't have to postpone that. That just puts things behind the curveball. I don't know when they plan on starting sidewalk or anything else, but, you know, we keep putting that out, that would be a good thing to.
Okay.
Make sure that we have somebody here that could answer those questions, so.
And I want to talk about streets again. So we need to put that on the agenda as the streets, what we're going to do next year.
Yep.
We've got quite a few that are getting real bad.
Yeah.
North and Maple.
Maple.
Well, that's why I say, I, I think that we need to schedule a retreat coming up, and I think we need to discuss some of the next moves that we have with the funds that we're going to have or not have. We'll be able to know. As far as I know, I don't think we have any matching funds coming up after this project on Erie Street.
I don't think so.
Don't we have something coming for downtown?
Well, but I'm not sure what our match is, that's in 2017.
Yeah, we don't even know the final number for our portion of that yet.
Right.
Right. It depends what decide we want.
Exactly. So that's, that's another retreat thing, I think that we could get started on in advance and, and we should be shooting for that retreat, because, believe it or not, it's almost August.
Well, I think if we're going to talk about streets, maybe we should, especially for major streets, we probably should get some representatives from MDOT, at least to report.
Well, at least for the 2017 project, that would certainly hurt or help.
Yeah, is, um, one of my concerns is, um, the spots on the street right now that we have, we had marked off all weekend, because the bricks are coming right out. You know, are we going to last?
Well, Cheryl and I were discussing that, that, uh, maybe now's the time to look to see if we can't have those intersections done in concrete.
Yeah.
At least Michigan Avenue and Superior, Cass and Superior and Erie, even though Erie doesn't seem to be.
Well, that's because they did all those repairs just a couple of years ago.
Well.
Really bad.
And that's what I say. If we could do the, the design to where we possibly have a, a ten or twelve-inch base of concrete in those intersections, which would also help, because with these big trucks, you've got to remember with these, what we used to call eighteen-wheelers are now forty-eight wheelers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They don't turn the corner, they slide. The more they have in the truck, the more they slide our brick.
Right.
So if they concreted those intersections, they would not be able to move that, and that would make a border for the bricks to stay.
Right.
Where they're at before the wheels get on there and do that. It's just an option, I don't know, yes?
I had a conversation with, uh, Bob Coy, with, uh, um, our code enforcement officer, John, and, and just in the conversation afterwards, we were talking about the 2017 project downtown, and that one option could be, in fact, that we don't have a brick street, but we have brick sidewalks, and that we basically have brick sidewalks at all the intersections, but everything else is concrete. And that that might be a way to save, the numbers bantered around are five hundred thousand dollars more for bricks, five hundred thousand dollars more for concrete over asphalt.
Well, one of the biggest problems we have with our brick street is that went all the way to a federal level.
Right.
And to try to get them to rescind that is probably going to be very, very difficult. Now, you might be able to move some, shake them a little bit or whatever, but I think as far as the, until they make a determination whether they're going to go with the center lane turn, or whether we're going to go, the only thing we're responsible for are the parking areas.
Right.
Those are ours, the rest of it's going to be entirely up to MDOT.
Right, right. Have, just real quick question regarding the center, the center lane turn thing. We haven't, have we, as a city, state, made a, stated an opinion on that?
No. On the state?
Or, or whether or not we want to keep the four or go to three?
Actually, we won't have a lot to say in it, because the four lanes out of the six are the states. They can reconfigure that any way they want.
And they will.
The only thing that they're under the gun for is using the brick.
Yeah, we, we have met with them as part of the overall biking lanes and those conversations, so they, they are aware that we are willing to consider going to the, the turn, the dedicated turn lane.
Okay.
It just seems to make sense on that street.
Right.
Well, and they did.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
That, that's all right.
Um, they did also off, Bob did suggest that there would be a possibility of staining the concrete throughout, so you have red concrete, and you could stamp a brick pattern if you wanted to, or you could just make it red.
Right.
So if you wanted to sort of.
We have to.
But there are other possibilities, that, that MDOT seems to be interested, at least at the local level, interested in exploring, so.
Yeah.
Well, we do, if, the thing is that when, when I see those bricks that loose, you start to worry that they're dangerous.
Right, they can be ejected.
Yeah.
Truck hits that corner, it flies off.
Well, the thing is, now, we know it's already going to be replaced, so I don't know why they just don't go down in asphalt over the top of them. The only problem is if it's from the turning trucks, the asphalt's not going to.
It's not going to do it.
Make a difference at this point, so. You know, and I'm sorry, citizens, it's your turn. I don't know how it got back here.
I'm sorry.
LaRose J. Bradley, 312 Arthur Street, Albion, Michigan. I'm one of the commissioners that sits on the Albion Housing Commission Board, and I applaud you for wanting to have your joint meeting, and I would like for you to clear up some issues for the Albion Housing Commissioners. The last time I was here, I was here for Ronald Gant and Joyce Washington, who were commissioners, and are commissioners on our board, and, uh, they were getting ready to be removed. Last time I was not here, I almost to the place where I hate to come to city council meetings, but, uh, I think last time the person that was being removed was, or not in, reinstalled, was Mr. James Arnett. I would like for the city council to give those of us that are commissioners, a list of what it is that you find that we are doing that is offensive. HUD has no problems with us. There are tons of reports that we have to submit to HUD are numerous. I would love to see some of you come to the open board meetings. You're welcome. But there seems to be some disillusion, and I don't, I don't know what it is. We're not in receivership, there's been no improprieties pertaining to financial matters. As I said, every time I come, I sound like a broken drum, but you tell me when the last time you picked up a paper and read of a stabbing, a killing, a drug bust, uh, in the Albion Housing Commission. The police department, uh, works well with us, uh, we thought the citizens did too. There seem to be a lot of people that are giving complaints about the way it ran, but nobody comes to the board meetings. That's the thing that blows our mind. We can come down here and the commissioners can tell us about people that are complaining, but they never come to us, they never come to the board meetings. Uh, we would like to see them in person. It's getting to where, you know, we're wondering what's going on, or, um, maybe all of us should resign, you know? Uh, I, the, ah, anyway, next term you discuss it, for our sake, because I think Mrs. Kip does an excellent job. You go down through the grounds, we're beautiful. And, and when I think about it, I think about the, uh, work the college is doing, how nice the city looks. It wouldn't help oncoming, incoming students for Albion College to pick up the paper and read about the mess at the housing commission, there is none. Those that sit on the board, those that, uh, supervise us, those that look out for us, they're doing their jobs. Only time we seem to have a problem is when it comes to here. So if you have a problem with the Albion Housing Commission Board, be kind enough to list on paper what it is that you find that we are doing that is offensive and that we could do a better job of doing. I thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brad.
May I ask you some questions?
Yes.
Do you remember me being the liaison officer for this council?
Oh, I sure do, we won't forget you, Maurice.
Do you remember, um, making a statement during an open meeting act that was, uh, taped? I want the Albion Housing Commission to run just like Albion College, under the radar.
Oh, well, I, would you want me to explain that?
No, can I move to the next question?
Yeah.
I don't care what happens in Albion, as long as it doesn't happen on Arthur Street.
Oh, Maurice, come on, I've never said that.
Okay, I'm not turning this into a.
I've never said that.
Do you require an answer?
No.
Then don't ask the question, buddy.
Okay, well, I'll let you answer.
That's not in my vocabulary, but go ahead.
Okay. You remember being on the telephone with me when I called you and I had a complaint with the, uh, commission, and you said?
On the phone with you?
Yes.
You called me?
Yes.
Okay.
If you keep it up, we're going to have a white person as the Housing Commission Executive Director.
I don't remember that, unless you tape it, I won't.
Okay, uh, next question. Do you remember creating disturbance when I was asking questions, uh, at the Housing Commission as the city liaison person? And I had to walk out and I came down and made a, a report to our city clerk?
Maurice, let's not go there.
Yes or no?
Let's not go there.
Okay, well, do you remember?
Okay, I'm, oh, I'm going to stop this questioning?
Decline.
Right here?
Yes.
I think we're going to meet with the Housing Commission.
I think so too.
And we'll take this further from this point on.
When you have the meeting, would you be, I would be glad to answer all of his questions in your session, okay?
All right. Thank you very much, Mrs. Brad, thank you. Are there any comments? Please come forward.
Janice Best, 710 South Eaton Street.
Laurie Grinnell, Pastor of Salem United Church of Christ, 113 West Pine Street. We want to thank you on behalf of Albion Rainbow Connection for putting human rights ahead of politics and congratulate you on being the fortieth city in the state of Michigan to have a non-discrimination ordinance that is as inclusive as this one is.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I think Janice also asked if the council would stay a couple of minutes after for a photo for them, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, I would like to thank you two also for providing, uh, an awful lot of help to the subcommittee that, that drafted this ordinance. Your efforts and the efforts of, of those in support of you, especially the ACLU, were very, very, uh, important for us as we, we came forward with this ordinance, so, so absolutely thanks go back to you guys for really helping us see the light and to make an ordinance that hopefully will stick.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. More citizens' comments?
Mike Fairman, 11016 29 Mile Road. Like I said, I'll be here every, uh, month to talk to you. Couple of things from the county, wanted to let you know that we had our audit at Wanted to let you know that we had our audit at the last meeting, and the auditors said we can't find one thing to gig you on. And they were really upset about it, because they said they've never seen a county, um, that has everything in place like we did. So that was a very, very good thing. Our audit, everything went through with flying colors, and really was really neat to hear that, because I know, I've been through a lot of other audits, and you don't normally hear that from an auditor. Two, we just got, we, in the past, uh, month, we also took and, um, passed a, um, one of our proposals that we're gonna be buying almost over six million dollars of new trucks and equipment, um, for the road department. It's gonna be huge. But what it's gonna allow us to start doing is, instead of spending all of our money on trying to repair, we'll have more money to put into the roads, because we, right now, we're repairing and spending all of our money on repairs. And that's what you're doing also, is you're spending all your money on repairs, where if you spend a little bit of money on buying the equipment and rotating the equipment every so often, you would end up having, um, more money to spend in the long run. Now, to turn my hat a little bit for the schools. Cheryl, when, when's the open house on the ribbon cutting?
Twenty-eighth?
Thirty.
Thirty?
The thirtieth.
Thirty. Thursday.
We're having a ribbon cutting ceremony at the playground on the thirtieth of the month. We want you all to come out and have hot dogs, swim, play on the playground, that. Uh, we've put a lot of time and effort into the playground. It's absolutely gorgeous. I've, today I was up there working again today, and, and I had, I counted fifty, sixty kids up there that weren't necessarily part of the school, the summer school. So we're, we've got a lot of kids coming through that area. We put three more pieces of equipment in, and we also installed a full court, court basketball. So, these are things that we are doing up there. We are, we are taking care of the little details now, um, and trying to advance the schools farther and farther all the time with that. So, a lot of good things are happening with it. We, we really have to keep up with, uh, everything. And my last, um, comment is, I know that, I'm on the, um, Workforce Development Committee also, out of Kalamazoo, and our biggest problem right now is we don't know where we're gonna find enough employees to fill all the jobs that are coming this way. So, over the next couple of years, because there's a lot of opportunities coming. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bierney. Are there any more citizens' comments? If not, I will ask the council for a new German.
So moved.
Lord.
Moved and supported, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. And we thank you all very much.
Was the policy just violated tonight?
Cheryl, who did we announce?